Good morning, everybody. Thank you for attending today's board superiors meeting for September 8, 2022. First thing on the agenda, I'm sorry, first thing that we're going to do is a congratulations, Supervisor Pirtillo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ready, salute.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you Supervisor Pirtillo.
Thank you.
Next item, next item we're going to do, acknowledge certificate of posting.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in there say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Third, item C, notice of temporary procedure for board superiors meeting, do you want to, you know, that little two-minute spill, ten, thirty-second spill?
Yes, good morning, thank you. If you're participating via Zoom and would like to make a comment, a joint public comment, please press the raise your hand icon. If you're participating by phone, please hit star nine and that raises your hand. Please state your first and last name for the record, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item, shoot, I just have a problem with my Zoom now. Do you have a Zoom number to look?
There's two numbers they can dial.
One of them.
Yeah. So if you're calling in, there's two numbers you can, you can call, it's six six nine nine hundred six eight three three, or you can dial four oh eight six three eight zero nine six eight. Our meeting ID for today's meeting is nine 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 zero three one six one six three nine, and then there, there is a password, it's three four three two oh nine.
Okay, I think I'm in. Okay, we're good.
Just mute it.
Mute what?
Your screen bounces. I think you got this one.
I don't? Oh, then let's just turn it off then. Turn it off. If I have to be on Zoom, I'm good.
You're on Zoom right here.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, I'm at home, that's the problem. Thank you, okay, that solves that problem, that technical. Okay, let's move on.
We have great memory.
Before we go to public comment, we're going to actually go into closed session first. And the reason why, Barbara, we need to go to closed session first?
We need to resolve, have the board consider this this morning as it relates to the election and there's timeframes at issue here. Closed session conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, number of cases won, subdivisions A and D one of five four nine five six point nine, name of case, Baragon versus Joe Paul Gonzalez, Superior Court of California, County of San Benito, case number CU twenty dash zero zero one one one.
So we're moving closed session to the front.
Correct, yes.
To the front. And we're going to do it right now. Okay, now we're going to go to closed session. Have their input on this closed session, closed session item?
And Edgar sent out a closed session invite, let's use that one. For anybody that's calling in, which would be maybe just Reed and Joel, all the boards here.
So we're going to go in the back, that's what we're going to do, Barbara.
Okay.
If you're participating by Zoom and would like to make a comment, hit the raise your hand icon, otherwise if you're participating by phone, hit star nine for public comment on closed session.
None? Okay, let's go to closed session.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, got it. Thank you, Dulce. All right, we came out of quick close session item. Anything to report, Barbara?
Yes, there is. Okay, as some people may be aware, there was a challenge regarding the ballot language in regard to the Stradivari Initiative. And the court indicated to add four words, the word zoning of agricultural land. In follow-up of the discussions after that decision by the trial court, we received a settlement offer which indicates that if the words innovation park is stricken in the first sentence of the first line of the ballot question, that there would be a stipulation that the attorney's fees would be reduced to seventy-five hundred dollars. And so, the board is inclined to accept that offer and has voted to accept that offer. That would be contingent upon neither party appealing or taking an appeal of this decision. And the vote on that was three-one with Supervisor Hernandez voting against the proposal. So the words innovation park will be removed from the ballot language, and that, of course, is subject to the court's approval of that revised language as well.
Okay, thank you, Barbara. Now go to D for presentations and recommendations. First one is present proclamation to Jacobs Heart Children's Center Support Services. Do we have any representatives from that group? None? Okay. I have a cop- I have a-
They are having a Zoom.
They'll be what?
They're on Zoom.
They're on Zoom? Oh, okay, perfect. Thank you. Well, thank you. Thank you for joining us today. Let me just give a brief what does this means and how important it is to our community. This is a proclamation by the Board of Supervisors honoring Jacobs Heart Children's Cancer Center Services, Support Centers Services, and declarations September two thousand twenty as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas the character of our community is relevant in how we treat our most vulnerable, and whereas each year one in two-hundred-and-eighty-five children in our community are being diagnosed with cancer, and whereas cancer remains the leading cause of death by disease among children, killing more children with than asthma, diabetics, cycrophoresis, congested alimony and AIDS combined. Wow. And whereas during the Corona nineteen crisis, Jacobs Heart has been keeping medically fragile children's and families' house fed and emotionally supported by steadfast alternate to the following commitments. One, parents with children with cancer and other serious illness will be relieved of financial fears and be able to focus attention to the children. No child undergoing intensive treatment in our community will be homeless. Good. Three, families of serious illness children will not experience food insecurity during and after the pandemic. And four, no seriously ill child in our community will ever miss a medical appointment because of lack of transportation. And it is important for Sambino County residents to recognize the impact of pediatric cancer on families within our community and honor the children in our community whose lives have been cut short by cancer. And now therefore, that the Sambino County Board of Supervisors do hereby declare September two thousand twenty as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Sambino County in honor Jacobs Heart Children's Cancer Support Services for outstanding support to our community and acknowledge the organization's contributions to Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Thank you. Is there a motion at table?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of the affairs say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Anyone from the public wants to make a brief presentation? None?
If your particip- if you're- would like to make a comment, please hit star nine or press the raise your hand icon.
None? Okay, thank you. We'll go to the next one. Board of Supervisors present certificates of appreciation to the volunteers of the Business Grant Review Committee for their time and dedicated in reviewing applications for the Corona nineteen disaster small business relief grant program. That will be Supervisor Hernandez.
Yes. Thank you Supervisor Dela Cruz. So me along with Supervisor Batello did a lot, you know, well, we first wanted to start off by thanking the review committee. It was such a heavy lift. I know the Chamber of Commerce and let me mention them all individually because I wanted to make sure that we give credit where credit's due. So we have Michelle Leonard from the Chamber of Commerce who did an amazing job. She actually was, we kind of nicknamed her the statistician because she helped us with ultimately going over the applications and putting them in an Excel format and basically vetting and fleshing out the questions on how to best define, you know, ultimately what the parameters that were going to be set for us to allocate this funding. Nelson A. Lenore from the Community Workforce Development Board, I believe, super helpful input from him. And then we had, well, Richard Bianchi, another individual that's been engaged through this whole process. We have Liz Sanchez Turner, really awesome input from different sectors, different folks from different sectors. And we have Bea Gonzalez, who's our, she's our soon-to-be supervisor come January first. And thank you to Enrique and county staff. This literally was like starting a business or a process within a business, the structures that it took, fleshing out the expectations with the CARES funding and then ultimately creating some very stringent expectations, making sure that they were equitable, that they would apply to everybody the same, giving everybody an opportunity. There was even engagement from the Enrique and staff to make sure that folks that didn't turn in an application, for whatever the reason, maybe there was a misunderstanding with the process, they made sure to engage them to try to bring them into the fold. So we tried really hard to make sure the business community, and it wasn't a perfect process. Let me stress that. I know that we're, we always could have done better, but honestly, with what we had and the fact that we literally had to create some strong parameters, it was a very, very heavy lift. There was a lot of time spent on this, not only in creating the process, but then ultimately in fleshing through the applications and then ultimately awarding the funds. And then, you know, going through each individual application, which we all agreed to do, and I'll be the first one to admit, I didn't get to finish all my applications, but I know that many of the committee members did. So we had enough data to basically justify how these allocations were going to be distributed. But I can't thank the committee members enough. I know they spent weekends, actually Supervisor-elect Gonzalez mentioned that she worked through midnight sometimes, so there was a lot of work done and time spent, and I appreciate that. That shows the heart and the effort of the committee members, that their goal was to make sure that we didn't overlook any detail in making sure the allocation of these funds were just. So thank you to Supervisor Batello for supporting this, and thank you for the rest of the committee members for what you did, because you really did an amazing job, and it sounds like we're on time. So I'm happy for that, that we're going to be able to distribute these funds. And when is the distribution going to start to happen, Dulce? Or I don't know if Enrique's on the line, maybe he can clarify too.
It'll be, it'll be the next allocation of our funds is the plan when we receive our next allocation. When we designed and built this, we built it based on receiving six-point-four approximately million all at once. And then there was a disbursement plan by the state. So we don't have all the funds yet, so once we get those funds, we will plan to make the payments.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, could add, you know, serving on this committee with my friend, Supervisor Hernandez, it's taken a lot of work, and I thought that this is just a small token of appreciation that the county should recognize the, you know, the volunteers of this committee, because Supervisor Hernandez stated, it was a lot of work, and I knew it was going to be, as you know, its staff, Dulce Alonso and Ray Espinoza, we put this program together as, like you said, we were trying to make it as a simple process for the businesses that have been so hard-hit in our community by COVID and the impacts on so many people. We wanted to share that CARES Act money as best we could, make it easy in the process, have a committee that is, you know, very well-balanced. They did a fantastic job, and I really appreciate you heading that up, Supervisor Hernandez, and did a great job, and thank you.
There was a lot of hours put in, and I forgot to mention that, yeah, that we prioritized those that were hardest-hit. That was definitely the goal for the committee is those that were impacted the most to get the most focus and then, you know, flesh it out from there. But, you know, I know for me myself, there was times where I, there was a whole weekend I spent committing to this, so, you know, basically, it was a good six to eight hours each single day. It was a lot of work. It really was. So I know the committee members did a lot more work than that, so thank you to everybody who participated. It was a huge community effort. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Supervisor Batello, you will do the volunteers.
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman Dela Cruz. Yeah, and part of this CARES Act money that was also, we wanted to recognize the fact that our nonprofits in our community have taken a very hard hit. So many of the functions that all of us that live here in Sambino County enjoy is some of the contributing to our favorite events that many of our nonprofits have. Well, this year, as we all know, that didn't happen. Yeah, but these nonprofits continue to do their work in the community at times that it created a greater demand. And so, the county, when we were awarded this CARES Act money, felt very strongly that we needed to get some of that, a portion of it, out to nonprofits as well. And that's the area that I worked with, with the Sambino Community Foundation and the United Way partnering with the county to, you know, make vet out nonprofits, see what their COVID impacts are. And we had a very similar process to the business grant program. And, but we could not have done it ourselves without the great partnership with the, you know, the Community Foundation, the United Way, Gary Burns and Vicky Fertino. And we wanted to express our gratitude to the, all the members, the board members that, committee members that helped us vet out all the applications. There was like forty-one or forty-two applications that this committee worked through, and they went and did interviews with the different committees of the nonprofits and figured out how to award the money that was allocated by the county right to the sent. And in my certificates of appreciation, I have the following names, Mr. Chairman. Rebecca Maderas Wolf, Susan Schubacher, Alan Clark, Don Larson, Allison Ronert, Mary Dam, who is in the gallery with us, I'm sure she'll say a couple of words, Crystal Lamonno, Sylvia Jaime, Jill McFarland, Kathy Tiffany, and Chris Breen. And I want to express my gratitude for their time and dedication to help all the nonprofits and the people in need in our community. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I think Mary Dam is here.
Okay. Good morning. Thank you very much for letting me be here today and represent this joint committee that worked very well together, the Community Foundation and United Way of our county. I've been with United Way for many years. It was a pleasure to work with the Community Foundation on this. We both organizations are very aware of the nonprofits in our community and what they do and what help they need. And it was forty-one applications. It was a wonderful CARES Act money that you gave to, interested to us to make the big decision. The nonprofits did suffer a lot because they weren't able to have their normal fundraising or get the normal grants that they do get, and they put forth a lot of extra effort because of what we've been going through. So thank you so much for recognizing us. Forty-one applications, that was a lot, and it was a pleasure. We, not only did we read all the applications, it took them very seriously, we actually interviewed someone from every single one of those organizations to get more in-depth into what their needs were. Then we got together, and thank you Anthony and Jaime for being there. You could see the many, many hours we put in just to that meeting, and it was not a slam dunk. It was a lot of back and forth discussion on what everybody's thoughts were, some of the recommendations were. some of the recommendations were either increased or decreased or thrown out altogether. So it was a wonderful thing to do, and thank you so much for letting us do that, and thank you for mentioning everybody's name. I was going to do that, and I'm glad you did.
Well, I have a real deep appreciation for the work that goes into it, that's for sure. And we couldn't have done it ourselves.
Yeah, and it affects so many people in our community, and it stayed here, and that's so important.
That's right.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll go to public comment, this is an opportunity to address the board items of interest not appearing on the agenda. No action will be taken unless provided by Government Code Section 54954-2. Do you have any speaker cards?
If you would like to make a comment, hit star nine or hit the raise your hand icon.
None? Okay. Let's move on, Department head of nonsense, Ray?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, yes, we have two announcements, one out of administration, I'd like to invite Dulce Alonso, our management analyst, up.
Good morning, Board. I have a quick announcement regarding census. The county is working with the Arts Council and they've created, some local artists created some census flyers for me, that we will be working with Cog on advertising at the bus stops and in the buses, but this one's in Spanish and this one's in English, but there's still time to fill out the census. The last date of self-response is September 30th of this month. Based on the count, it determines funding, how people, the electoral boundaries, it affects our, how much representation we get at the state and federal level, so making sure everybody counts is very important for our county. So, just a reminder, and a very special thank you to the Arts Council, and also working with Community Foundation and Youth Alliance to get these posters and information out to our community.
Thank you, Dulce. We also have another announcement out of our county council's office, I have Barbara Thompson here.
This is just a notation that, this is just a notation on number 17, that on the final map before it's recorded, there's going to be a, one of the conditions of approval relating to the affordable housing, I think it was number 14, that there'll be an agreement with the county relating to the affordability of the housing at that site, and that would be the same condition of approval that was in the tentative map, and it's just going to be reflected on the final map.
That's all the announcements, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Medina?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you, Supervisor Betello?
Nothing this morning, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hernandez?
No, nothing, sir.
Thank you. I have nothing to report. Okay, consent? Any of the board members, members wish to push any of the consent items? Anyone from the public?
Public comment?
What, excuse me?
Public comment, he's.
We're done with public comments, sir.
On consent?
We're on consent.
Yeah, number 11?
Number 11.
Pull?
Mm-hmm, pull.
And I'm actually going to pull item number, number 15.
15?
Yep. Is it 15 or 16? Which is the mobile homes, Ray, 15 or 16?
You're talking about the trailers?
Yes.
I think that's under the CARES funding.
It's 16?
I believe so.
Okay, so not 15, but 16?
It's just a tiny, it's not a mobile home, it's a tiny, the tiny homes? Is that what you're talking about, or are you talking about mobile homes?
Talking about mobile homes.
Yeah, the CARES funding, the two trailers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I saw it last night, I just don't know what number it was.
That's part of the CARES Act presentation.
Yeah, it's part of that one.
So it's 16?
Unregular, regular item.
It's a regular item.
It's a regular item.
Perfect, I'll withdraw 15 and 16. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board on consent?
I make a move to approve items 1 through 19 as written, Mr. Chair.
With the exception of number 11.
Oh, 11, with the exception of 11.
A second?
Allos in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Number 11, Supervisor Betello.
Well, I pulled that with the idea that, I think this is a real good opportunity, kind of work with the City of Hollister and add an activity to our town here, and whoever put that together did a great job, I just thought it was too good of a thing to just leave it on consent, and so, great work to all those involved in this.
That was Tina Garza from the Hollister Rec Department, she pushed hard for that, and she deserves, yeah, her and her supporters, all that credit.
Great, thank you.
Also, to put in it on the Vets Commission, there was a lot of work that was, you know, that was done quickly to get that on from staff as well, and, yeah, I think it's a great thing.
Great.
Now, my understanding is, you know, being on the Vets Commission for thousands and thousands of years, anything that had, that's doing at the Vets Park has to be, for the interest of the vets, I mean, that's according to that old resolution they got approved back in 1948 or 54, I don't know, and it specifically says that nothing can be used other than for that, how does this fits into that, into that allowable uses?
Can you define what you just said?
Yeah, what I said, it has to be for military and in the name of veterans.
So the baseball and everything else is?
Open to the public.
It's open to the public. We do have a actual veteran that sits on, she's actually the chair of our Vets Commission. We also use that for recycling, we've had a recycling from ecology over there. There's also, we did a carnival. So this is all opened to the public, and it actually, it shows us that we're using usable space to the advantage, to our advantage.
Okay, so I guess we're, we are redefining the interpretation of it back in 1954, okay. I guess it's.
I don't think that's the case. Do we have that language?
We can get that, we can get that language, I don't think we have it right now available.
Just to clarify?
But what I think, what I think the essence of it is, is that it goes through the Vets Commission, hence why we had to take it to the Vets Commission first, this is kind of something that we're bringing to your board after the fact, but that's the premise of, I think, what you're talking about Supervisor Nella Cruz, is that in order for us to do something at that park, it does need to go through that, through the Vets Commission, I think that's kind of what you're getting at, so that already did happen.
Yeah, it did go through the Vets Commission.
And it was a unanimous vote.
And that was the emergency item that we put on.
They had one last year, and it did not go through the Vets Commission, right?
Yes, it did.
It did, I was, I sit on the Vets Commission.
Yeah, I was on that meeting myself, too.
Vets Commission. What went through last year, Jaime, without the Vets Commission? Well, and I'd like to know, if you're going to make a statement, please back it up.
Yeah, well, I mean.
What was it?
I was the first one to hear about this when the carnival was happening the next day.
That went through the Vets Commission, and it went through actually twice, I believe.
There was a lot of collaboration.
So maybe, you know, you can retract that statement, and we can look back at previous agendas.
Okay.
I think the general sentiment, to be clear, Mr. Chair, is that that park hasn't been used, and now it's going to be used, and the Vets Commission supported it, like Supervisor Medina mentioned, there's a Vets Commission member that's actually also a vet, and so there's broad support for something that's not going to be productive for vets, and I think that it's still at the helm of them having authority over it, which is why it went to the Vets Commission, but the implications of it is, is the benefit to the community, which is broadly supported. And now we finally have a park that's open, so now we're trying to use it in a way that still to a certain extent adheres to the rules.
All right, closes consent? We already voted number 11, right?
I guess we, I'll make a motion to approve.
Comment, is there a second?
Public comment.
Public comment.
Is there any comments from the public?
If you would like to make a comment, please hit the raise your hand icon or hit star nine now.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 11. A second?
Second, allos in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Now we go to regular consent, I'm sorry, regular agenda, number 20, Health and Human Services Agency, Ray?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, yes, we have Tracy Belton, our Health and Human Services Director, on the line, she's going to be presenting this particular item. Tracy?
Good morning. I have my card.
Go ahead, Tracy.
Sorry, Dulce, just Dulce put up the PowerPoint, please.
Tracy, we're on consent agenda, it's an item 15 that got pulled.
No, no, I'm sorry.
We're on item, we're on item number 20, yeah.
We're on the COVID update, correct?
Yeah, Dulce is bringing up the PowerPoint presentation right now.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you, thank you. So, good morning, I can go ahead and get started, so just a brief update, I just wanted to, let's see, can't see the slideshow yet, there we go. You can go to the next slide, please. Just a brief update on our numbers from our dashboard, this is as of yesterday, you will notice that we did have another death last week, so we're up to nine, active cases are 85, still seen, cases transferring in households, so just wanted to remind people to look at this if they want to get the data, this is updated daily on our website. Next slide, please? Next slide, please? So, I don't think that's the next one. I can go ahead and speak from this, so the governor released a new blueprint for a safer economy last week or the week before, and has changed the way cases are being evaluated as well as created a four-tier system, which you'll see here. There are four tiers, number, the first tier is the purple tier, which is the widespread tier at the top of this chart, and you move down as your cases decrease into the other colored tier. So some are referring to the numbered tiers, we're trying to refer them in the color of the tier. So the new data that's being measured is new cases and positive tests is the two things that are being measured to push you in and out of the tiers. Dr. G will be available at the, more about the data, as well as our epidemiologist will be on. So currently, San Benito County in the purple tier, which is the widespread tier, the most restrictive tier. The only thing that was allowed to open in the purple tier that wasn't prior to this tiering system is beauty salons and barber shops. No other industries in that beauty industry besides beauty salons and barber shops. And so, I know locally, some of our, probably all of our beauty salons and barber shops have opened following the guidance that was issued prior to the previous shutdown of their industry, and so I think they were encouraged to see that they were able to open up, and we have seen a lot of those industries opening. And if you can go to the next slide? So this is our current county metrics as of yesterday, so you can see our rates are high, they need to drop down lower in order for us to shift to the second substantial tier, and this is found on the website, and it's updated daily. Actually, they may have shifted it not to daily anymore, but we can move through that, Dr. G can talk a little bit more about that, too. Go ahead to the next slide. So this just talked about how we at the county move through the tiers, so the state assigns every county to a tier based on, like I said, the positivity rate and their adjusted case rates. We have to remain, that once we shift out of the purple tier, we have to remain with those numbers for three weeks until we can move into the next tier. So once we, once we start testing below those numbers, we have to remain there for three weeks before we shift to the substantial tier, which is referred to as the red tier. The data is reviewed weekly and is updated on Tuesday, so the numbers, I believe, may have come out since we've been on the meeting for today. I believe we're still in the purple tier, just based off knowing what our numbers have been over the last consecutive week. If our numbers were to worsen for two consecutive weeks, we'd move back to the restrictive tier. So there's no movement out of the purple tier, it's the most restrictive tier, so we are aiming to go to the less restrictive tier, and that's really what we as a county as a whole want to aim for. Once we move forward, even if we were to jump metrics really drastically, we can't jump to the lower tier, we have to stay in the red tier and have to be in that tier for three weeks in order to move to the next tier. And then there is a possibility that even if we were to shift to a lower tier and our health officials felt that we needed to restrict some of the industries, we could, our health officer still has the authority to do that, and so we're evaluating that regularly. Next slide. So we attach the website to our county website, it's the blue, you'll see the blue area, it's on the covid19.ca, and it's called Blue Point for Safer Economy, we just wanted to ensure everyone that it is also a link on our website, so if you couldn't remember the covid19.ca.gov, you can go to our website and find it there as well. Next slide. Actually, can you go back really quick, I'm sorry? I just wanted to just, if you go to the website where it's Blueprint for a Safer Economy, it actually has the ability to search by county and by industry, and some people were inquiring about other counties, and it's actually pretty interesting to look at, so if you go in and you type in the county that you want to see, so if you wanted to look at our county versus our neighboring counties or another county that you may have family in, you can type in the county name, and then you can search for the industry and see what industries are open in those areas. And you can do it for the whole state of California and see what their positivity rate, what they're doing, and it's a searchable site, and so I encourage you all to take a look at it and search the industries, and then it also tells if the industry is able to open, how they're able to open. So it defines, like in our county, beauty salons and barber shops are open, so that would show, but if you go to, say, a smaller county that has less numbers, or a number that, a county that's doing better than ours, they may have indoor massage parlors that are now allowed to open and those types of things, so it's really interesting to look at, so I would encourage you all to take a look at it, and like I said, it is a searchable site. Okay. So this is just the current data on our OptumServe testing site, to date, as of yesterday, we've performed 8,582 sites, tests, I'm sorry, we've received 5,666 results, negatives being the majority, 5,293, and positives being 373, and they're doing much better on the turnaround time for the testing, that's been encouraging, I think people are receiving their results within three to four days now, which is still not great, but it's way better than six to seven days, and so we have 91 pending. Optum Serve is due to end their testing at the Vets Building on September 30th, we haven't heard any extension of that, however, the county, us as county admin and our public health department, we are working with Hazel Hawkins Hospital to expand the county's testing capacity, and so that's a work in progress, we're trying to help figure out ways to expand testing there so that we will still have testing available for our residents of the county. Next slide. Just a reminder to, you know, continue to wear a mask, physical distance, wash your hands, and minimize mixing of households. We did put out a press release over prior to the holiday about if you were choosing to mix with other individuals or households, to try to, you know, create these environments outdoors, continue to wear a mask and physical distance as much as possible. We did see, you know, statewide a surge in cases over the 4th of July, and so we understand that people are wanting to gather, and so we put that press release out, just encouraging individuals if they were going to choose to gather, that they would be mindful of these things and really continue to be mindful of these requirements that help slow the spread. Next slide. So Dr. G is on the line, as well as our public health staff, you wanted to share anything, Dr. Geller Ducci?
Yeah, thank you, Tracy, that was a good overview, and I just want to say, we had seen what we were, we were hopeful that we were starting to see a kind of decline from the summer surge that we've all gone through statewide.
that they would be mindful of these things and really continue to be mindful of these requirements that help slow the spread. So, Dr. G is on the line, as well as our public health staff. You wanted to share anything, Dr. Geller-Ducci?
Yeah, thank you, Tracy. That was a good overview. And I just want to say, we had seen what, we were hopeful that we were starting to see a kind of decline from the summer surge that we've all gone through statewide. And we did see some hopeful signs toward the beginning of August, but then the case rates have popped up again. So, I don't know if that represents just some case fluctuation or if it represents, you know, another surge. But for whatever reason, we are having difficulty in San Benito County with the number of cases. Our test positivity rate also appears to be climbing, and that tells me two things. One is, the people that are coming to get tested are more likely to be positive, obviously. And it also says that we're probably not doing enough testing for our population. So, the Optum Serve site continues to be very important. And then, expanding testing capacity in other ways, such as partnering with Hazel Hawkins, will be a big part of that as well. So, there's a higher likelihood that there are a number of cases out there that were not detecting. For various reasons, people don't get tested for various reasons. There's certainly up to 40% of people are asymptomatic. So, it's all very concerning. But one thing I did notice was that our rates, you know, like if you look at neighboring counties like, counties like Monterey and Santa Cruz County, we don't compare as well to those counties. But when you look at the kind of borders that we share, so South Santa Cruz County, North Monterey County, and San Benito County, which are very similar kinds of areas, tend to have similar disease rates. So, those are otherwise obscured by county-wide data, these kind of regional concentrations. So, we still have a lot of work to do. There's not a lot of tools left in our toolkit in terms of bringing this down. I believe that the state restrictions are appropriately targeted. I was happy to see that the hair salons, the restrictions there were relaxed, based on our earlier conversations and the fact that we haven't seen a lot of case transmission in that particular industry. But there's not a lot more that we can do. So, I just appeal to the public again, really, it's going to require their vigilance and their care in terms of keeping this from spreading. So, you know, we'll just continue to watch it. But again, the big push, I think, is expanding testing capacity and to continue to do the things that we're recommending.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Geller-Ducci or public health staff?
Yeah, I had some questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had some questions, Tracy and Dr. G. What is O O J on that previous slide that you had?
Those are individuals who do not live here but are tested here. So, I think it stands for out of jurisdiction.
That's what I, that's what I.
Monterey County, but they want to be tested here. They may work here. Yeah, so that's what that is. And those do not account for our positivity rate at all.
Well, for me, it kind of begs the question a little bit about the impacts of folks that are testing. Well, two things. One is, yeah, that are from outside of our community or working outside of our community, right? So, we're, have rules that set an expectation for the locals to do the right thing or under the assumption of doing the right thing, whatever, whoever's interpretation that is. But nonetheless, you know, you could have a perfect bubble in San Benito County and still have a high positivity rate. Because what happens outside of our county, we have no control over. So, it's just something to really think about, right? We're a bedroom community. You know, you have a lockdown where businesses are basically shuttering their doors and a lot of impacts happening locally, including mental health, which we don't ever talk about, and I honestly would think it'd be a little bit fair to bring those things up, to put things into balance. Mental health impacts suicide. You know, I know someone personally that committed suicide. It's really disturbing, and it's directly related to this, to the lockdown. So, anyways, but nonetheless, I feel like there's got to be a better balance with understanding of what that, what these implications are, not just of a perfect scenario where we're trying to control cases in our county, but to a certain extent, making the, making this objective with the reality of folks that are commuting and really the inability for us to manage those folks. So, so anyways, go ahead.
Sorry. I'm sorry. I just wanted to echo what you said and completely concur. The virus doesn't care about county lines, and so, those are somewhat artificial borders. And the mental health issue is certainly a huge issue. We're going into, I don't know, six or seven months of this now. These are tough restrictions on people. There's economic impact. And we really have to do what we can to support one another as we get through this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Dr. G. So, yeah, so, and then the other question had to do with what you mentioned as far as people coming to be tested are more likely to be positive. So, to me, the way that I interpret that, that means folks are feeling symptoms, they're showing up. And that makes sense, right? As with anything else, any other virus. But that being said, could it be possible that people being asymptomatic or not having any symptoms, or maybe very little, are no longer interested in being tested? You know, so I know that the CDC put out info about testing, and there was a mention of asymptomatic not being as serious, so that reverberates into the communities. And at one time, the governor supported the CDC, and now he seems to not like the CDC. So, I'm just confused a little bit because I think that, that kind of, the interpretation of it means our community struggles to know who to trust and how to apply that science, or supposed science. So, if you can share on that, Dr. G?
Yeah, no, I think you make another great point there is, when there are barriers to testing, that, you know, you can't get an appointment or you've heard that the turnaround time is long, you're going to be less likely to seek testing unless you're motivated to do so. And so, those who are symptomatic, who are concerned, are more likely to come forward and to go through what they need to go through to get tested. And so, that, I think, does raise the positivity rate. If testing is easier to obtain and people are confident that they'll get results back in a timely manner, then I think they're more likely to seek testing, even if they're mildly or asymptomatic. So, it all kind of comes back to making testing more abundant and easier to get. And we've had a real crisis over the summer with respect to that. It's improving, but we need, there's more work that we need to do in that arena.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Dr. G, I got a question. Do you feel that, that having the backyard quinceañeras weddings in the backyard, having a family members and friends get together for barbecue, is that a greater risk of exposure versus at a bar?
You know, scaling the two together is difficult. Both of them, you know, whenever you have a situation where members of different households get together in close contact, like at a party or in a bar, then that's where we're seeing a lot of risk. I think the bars have been clearly identified nationwide as being a risk factor, various reasons for that. Obviously, people from different households coming together. Bars tend to be loud. So, people need to kind of speak loudly, which is another risk factor. Then also, just the consumption of alcohol tends to, you know, lower people's sense of caution. And so, I think all those factors are important. We certainly have seen outbreaks related to family gatherings or multiple families getting together even in backyard. So, it doesn't have to be in a bar setting. It certainly helps when these things are outside, but that's not a completely protective element. So, I think both of those activities where you're congregating with people from other households in a kind of a social setting like that without distancing are all risky.
I guess, I guess my question is, are we trying to identify those businesses or events or situations to minimize the infection? Is that, is that the goal?
Yeah, I think the idea, you know, first, there, sort of a kind of, early on, we saw a relatively blunt tool, which was just a complete shelter at home. Everything shut down. And as we've learned more, we've been able to more finely tune the kind of level of restriction based on the level of risk that each industry has. So, you know, initially, for example, the hair salons were considered to be very risky because you're in close contact, you're within six feet, greater than 15 minutes with another person. But as we learned going forward is that if both parties are wearing face coverings, that risk is relatively low. And so, that was reassuring. But certainly, other industries that involve larger numbers of people getting together, like indoor dining or bars in particular, were found to be more likely to create widespread spread. And so, so I think the idea is to try to more finely target the restrictions to those activities that are the riskiest.
Supervisor Batello?
Yeah, you know, I'm just so pessimistic about all this now. I know as a community, we have not done enough as far as protecting each other and ourselves. And we should have taken more of a leadership role on this board and had some enforcement to some of these activities that are deemed very high risk. Instead, we went the other way and just tried to encourage people to maintain their social distance, wear a mask. But at the end of the day, it's everybody's prerogative. And I think we're seeing the ramifications of what's going on with our positive testing. And it's not just San Benito County. It's in the state, and it's probably in the whole country. But it's going to be pretty frustrating, in fact, that we're, we have a couple more months of decent weather. The businesses that are open, that have been outside, restaurants, they're kind of enjoying things right now a little bit as best they can. But when the bad weather hits, you know, that's a, you know, kind of have a profound impact on those businesses and the people that work there. And I don't see the infection rate going down. And I think everybody accepts that. It'll probably go up during the flu season. And we just didn't do enough early. We were close, but didn't do it.
Supervisor Batello?
I think so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may a little bit, just kind of to, I think, as always, things need to be put in context. And I sense the earnestness of the sentiment of Supervisor Batello. It still doesn't ring clear to me as far as logical, because think, if you think about it, Supervisor Batello, we're at a place in time now where literally, we're, we're deeming an activity that historically has always been a good thing, to socialize, to engage, right? There's critical thinking. There's activity. There's a sense of unity. There's a sense of love. And there's, there's an element in society, even within the familial element, of an activity. It's always been good. And we're now at a place where we're telling people to stop being human. That's got to be a, that's got to be something that becomes pretty eye-opening to the public, that we're at a place where we're trying to tell you to do the opposite of what history has always said has always been good. And to think that somehow we're going to mitigate it with a fine? I think by default, that means me, the person who's really not trying to hurt anybody, who's trying to do the right thing, now I'm a criminal? Because I want to be with someone that I love? You know, if I feel like there's less risk because I'm healthy and, you know, the public in that sense can critically think themselves, the autonomy that that person carries, the ability to rationalize whether they should or should not. I mean, risk is associated with life. There's decisions that we make every day that are risk-based. And this is the one thing that we're thinking, that somehow we, the government, have it right to where we stop people from living. You know, and it doesn't mean that you're without precautions at all. But it does mean is you're, you're giving the individual authority to make that decision for yourselves. I think it not only insults the public, makes them think like, oh, you don't trust me. But then, by default, it creates failure because we're pretty much criminalizing, like I said, something that has always been deemed good, and now it's bad. Now, it's officially bad. And that's, that's, that, to me, that just is failure by default. The position that we're taking or that other jurisdictions had taken. And that's why we have the revolts. That's why we have the uprisings. That's why it's growing even more. The more we push, the more the public is going to push back. So, I think we got to get to a place of honestly clarity and then bringing the animus and the frustration down. And enforcement is not the way to do it. That's my honest opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Hernandez. Ray, correct me if I'm wrong here, Ray, but last week, we had a record week. And, or was it the week before? But either way, we had. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. We have had increase. They're jumping. They're, they're jumping. And, and we are now faced with some businesses that are doing it behind the scenes, hiding it from public and total violation.
Another question is, what's causing that? Is it that people just want to get people sick, which is basically an assumption? Or is it because they're struggling for their livelihoods, that sheltering in place, social distancing, all of that has less value to them than them taking care of their family and paying their bills? It's not a simple cut and paste. Because if it was, if we truly were on this equity element, then we would refund them for the damage we've done to them.
You know, the state of California gave us guidelines and mandates without any teeth to it. The only thing that they have hostage on us is, look, you follow all these rules, and we're going to give you this care money. If you don't follow these rules, we have a potential, oh, we're going to talk about that pretty soon. We're going to have a potential to take that money away from you. You're a great programmer of the business, grant money. If we don't follow the state's California, the state of California rules, your idea, your grant might not, might be in jeopardy.
To be clear, Mr. Chair, and I agree, federal government never made those rules. When they get, the federal government gave us the CARES funding, it didn't come with those strings. It was our governor and his edicts that changed the rules to pretty much put teeth in saying, either you take these, either if you want our crumbs, you have to bow. You have to basically cater to what we say. Otherwise, you get nothing. Again, it reeks of insults and of division. And all I'm saying is just take the temperature of the public's discourse. We're at an all-time distrust, and our communities are falling apart and at the rule of one person. Because he literally, officially, he's the monarch in our state. He's making decisions by himself. He's not even, he's disavowing the legislature. The legislature has been silent on all this stuff.
We are playing Russian, God, he's pronounced that word Russian. Thank you. It could happen to me. It could happen to Anthony. We could die tomorrow if we were, we were to contract it. Your grandparents, if they're still alive, bless their soul, it could hurt them.
So could.
My mom, who's 85 years old. She's very sick. It could hit her. She could die from it. That's who I care for.
I do, too. I honestly do. But who's the better to interpret how to protect them? Us, the government, or the public themselves? Do you honestly think people want to get her sick? I don't. But again, the more we push, the more pushback we get. It's only getting worse.
And, you know, Supervisor Batello said it perfectly. We had a chance to implement something, and we dropped the ball. We dropped the ball. Bottom line, we dropped the ball. You know, it's a matter of interpretation. I get it. But from my perspective, we dropped the ball. We could have enforced something, and we didn't. And now, raising and talking about care money, that could be jeopardized. That even community foundation money might not get their money.
The only way that, the only way that statement could be true, Mr. Chair, is if you believe government is a solution.
Okay, I think we're getting on the line and going into 21, so I apologize to my fellow board members for going too extensive. I apologize. Okay, let's open up to the public.
If you would like to comment, hit the raise your hand icon. If you're participating by phone, hit star nine now. If you would like to participate or comment, please, please hit the raise your hand icon now or hit star nine if you're participating by phone. And then, if anybody in the audience would like to do a public comment, speaker cards are with the clerk of the board.
Richard Benton Court, 4140 South Side Road. Sitting here in the back there. Sitting here in the back there listening. I have to agree with Peter. If you guys would have fined the folks in this county, I don't think the numbers would have been any different, Anthony. You might have made some more money. But I have to agree, it's up to the public and the businesses. We've dealt with, like you're dealing with in in your business, with listeria. You know, it it costs the companies millions of dollars to take care of that problem, but it didn't kill it completely. It's still there. I mean, the virus is going to be here after they get a vaccine, in my opinion. I think your responsibility, as far as I'm concerned, is to make sure that the hospitals have enough beds and if, and respirators, if that's what it takes. Vaccines, when it comes out, to give to the public, that's your responsibility. Not, I mean, you're not going to stop the virus, no matter what you do. So I just go along with Peter in that, you know, this, I don't know what the answers are either. My brother had it. I had a brother-in-law that had it. I believe one of your nieces and nephews are both in the hospital a week or so ago. And they came, they got it out of Mexico. From what I understand. So, and they went down there to, like Peter says, it's, it's, so they wanted to see their I don't think you, whatever you do is not going to stop them. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Mr. Benkort. Hello, Dan Valkazar here, San Benito County resident. I just want to make a comment, what I'm hearing here about this, and I want to talk about the word discretion. As some of you may know, I used to work for the police department in San Jose many years ago, and I want to use that as an example. As a young police officer, you might pull somebody over for a traffic violation. So there's a law that's in place. After I pull them over, I might interview them and find out that it's your mom, or your brother, or your daughter, or somebody. And they didn't know what they were doing, you have a discussion, maybe you give them a warning, because you have discretion. If you have no law and everybody wants to speed, then everybody says, too bad, I'll speed if I feel like it. And what are you going to do about it? Nothing. So it doesn't matter what you guys decide, it should be up to your constituents to decide, it should be up to the county here to decide, and you guys should hear from everybody. But if you think about it, we have civil codes that are this thick. And we hardly enforce any of it. I'll use, for example, fire hydrant. We know you're not supposed to park there, right? Somebody parks there, somebody comes along and says, hey, you might want to move, you get your car to it, oh, I'm sorry, they move. They didn't get fined, they didn't get a ticket, they got warned, they got educated. So my point is this, if you had an ordinance in place, if it, for example, helped the county have funding, you don't have to enforce it, you don't have to hire all of us to go out and pay all of us to go out and find everybody or search everybody out. The person that's doing the quote unquote enforcement could also do a few other things like educate, encourage. If it didn't work with somebody, maybe they want to warn them. Maybe they want to ask the business owner to help out with, maybe somebody they know and say, hey, come on, you know what, they want you to wear the mask, okay, fine. Maybe you get some encouragement, some cooperation. Worst case scenario, somebody says, oh, just for fun, I said, they'll say, F off. What are you going to do? So let's say it's administrative, and they say, well, I guess I got to give you a little administrative ticket because I've asked you nicely, I've encouraged you, I've asked everybody around that might know you, and you're still being defiant, if you want to use those words, which they may not be, depends on what your position is. But let's say for this example, they say, fine, whatever. Maybe they even argue, so you call deputy, you call this, who knows? But anyway, they get a little admin. By the time they come to their hearing, usually they're calmed down, everybody wants to be healthy, nobody's trying to get anybody sick. And maybe they have a discussion, and maybe after it's all over, with discretion, maybe you don't fine them. You guys have the ability to do all of this. The spirit behind it versus the leather law. The leather law will may say you can fine somebody. The spirit of the law says, hey, we're trying to get cooperation, we're trying to move people along. So back to my example of years ago, many years ago, if I pull somebody over.
Summarize it, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it no more speakers?
If if you're participating via Zoom over the phone, hit star nine if you would like to participate. If you're on Zoom, hit the raise your hand icon for public comment. Please state your first and last name for the record. Please unmute yourself.
Hello?
Hi. Please state your first and last name for the record.
My name is Jane Recadell.
Okay, and your three minutes will begin.
I would like to speak in favor of having the wearing of masks encouraged either by an ordinance or some type of a regulation so that we can move forward in our county with improved science-based way to address this issue. By refusing to wear masks, people aren't giving the opportunity for others to make a change that could change our positivity rate and move us into a more positive economic state. As long as there's a lack of science behind the issue, I think that we aren't going to ever get to the point where we'll be able to be free in our economy. So if, whatever way it takes to encourage people to wear masks, I think is a good thing. We've found out that not wearing masks obviously does not work, so I think it's time to wear masks so that we see that that in fact will work. And if everybody got behind it, I think we'd be able to open up our economy much more quickly than if we don't. So thank you for your time, and I hope that the board will see that it is in fact probably the only way we can move forward.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please unmute yourself and state your first and last name for the record.
Hello?
We can hear you, go ahead and state your first and last name.
Hi, my name is Robin Gayhart, and I live in Union Heights. I would just like to state that people coming to San Benito County to have wedding receptions because we have no enforcement. Why is there no enforcement? All I hear about is people calling in, raging about all this stuff about open San Benito County. And I'm wanting to tell you that I want the county to do the right thing. Don't open up San Benito County, keep us safe. And the silent majority is sitting here not saying anything, and the public does not all agree with the vocal open San Benito County. Thank you.
We have, we have no more speakers.
Okay, thank you. That concludes number 20. Now we'll go to one more? Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. Good morning, sorry, I'm running a little late. So I agree with just this last caller, there is a majority that is silent. There is a minority that is very loud, and I commend them for the work that they're doing and spreading whatever it is that they want to do. What the county has to do and the county, what the county has been doing is abiding with what the state is doing. There is no enforcement. It's if if we can come up with and what other, the other counties are doing, it's not so much enforcement as it is as they're walking up and they're educating them. And if they don't comply, then there's enforcement. It's very simple. People speak all the time, I'm against an ordinance for the mask, but I wear the mask because I'm supposed to wear the mask. Going to store, I just had a friend who was physically accosted because the woman was asked to wear a mask in Santa Clara County. It is a steep fine for the business owner. He politely handed a mask to her and said, you please wear a mask or you're going to have to leave. It got belligerent, the husband came in, it literally was physically assaulted. She came in, she helped the husband. Highway Patrol, Sheriff's Office, Fire Department, everybody responded. It got ugly. It doesn't have to be that way. I don't know what's going on with human beings today that you just cannot show respect for another human being. This is not a San Benito County issue, this is a worldwide issue. And it's amazing to me how people, when you should come together as a human race, have become divided because you either want to or you don't want to and your constitutional rights are being violated. And it's like, it's this is your health, this is the health of your neighbor, this is the health of an elderly person, this is a person, you don't know what a person of high risk looks like. They look like you and me, but you're high risk. I think we need something, no, I don't think, I believe we need something. We need, we need enforcement. The numbers from the last time we came up here, we have had more, we have had a few more people die. I don't know what the deterrent can be if it's death to a neighbor or to a family member. We need something, we need enforcement, and it's education. It's not criminal, it's administrative, people don't understand that. Then educate yourselves, it's not my responsibility to educate you, but it definitely is San Benito County, open up San Benito County to educate themselves that this is an administrative process.
Thank you. No more speaker cards? Okay, thank you. That concludes number 20, now we'll go to 21, Ray.
Couple comments real quick, Mr. Chair, on 20.
Yes.
Just to clarity, so, you know, we're being, we're told to follow the science, so according to the CDC, asymptomatic testing is no longer encouraged, asymptomatic spread is not a high risk, again, per CDC. Right now, the 94% of deaths have comorbidities and it's not making light of it, right? It's, if you have a comorbidity, obviously you're more sensitive, but it's the reality is that of the actual deaths, 94% of them had those comorbidities, it's only 6% that actually didn't. So it just speaks to the facts, again, this is science, and we're talking about that it's the silent minority that's speaking a lot, it's far from the truth. 12,000 people just showed up yesterday in Sacramento, 12,000 people. There's, there's a lot of events, which I couldn't remember off the top of my head, Huntington Beach, Los Angeles, I know it in a, in a lot of these hotbed states, the big cities, San Francisco, there's a huge protest on the Golden Gate Bridge. It's growing and it's only going to get worse. If you call that the silent majority or minority, then it's an alternate universe that I'm not seeing. So anyways, I just wanted to clear the air, and that's what I'm telling you, is if you want your community to be divided, enforcement is the way to do it, I guarantee it. And I know you'll come back to me months later to tell me you were right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, let's go to, go to the next one, Dulce.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to bring this item up, this is kind of a part two to our COVID update just a few minutes ago. But I think it's relevant to present this in light of what we've done, all the work we just talked about earlier this morning, as well as kind of laying out the plan and actually defining it, clearly defining it in a presentation to your board. So Dulce has done a great job with that, she has a PowerPoint that she's going to present to you. I believe Stuart's going to go ahead and highlight a couple of things as well, so Dulce.
Thank you, Ray. Good morning, board, and like Red said, we're going to provide an update on the proposed budget, review how we're allocating CARES Act and where we are on certain projects. So just as a reminder, San Benito County was awarded $6,357,000, and this is of the state's allocated portion of CARES Act funding. This didn't come straight from the US Treasury as we don't have a population over 500,000. So this is the state allocating $6,357,000 to the county. Just to review, some of the eligible expenses are listed here. For the county, it has to be directly related to COVID and responding to it from expenditures March 1st through December 30th. Part of the state's allocation, we had to agree to, we had to attest to the state that we would follow certain guidelines. So we agreed to certain conditions in order to receive CARES Act funding. So I want to highlight and emphasize these for you. So there's four main things we agreed to. We're going to adhere to any federal guidelines and state's stay-at-home order requirement that we're going to use a funding in accordance to the, to the provision of the Budget Act. And we have to report and summarize expenditures. And part of the attestation stated to return any unspent funds by October 30th, 2020. However, Stuart and I were on a call this past Friday, and as long as we show obligations and that we are in line to spend the full allocation, the county should be good. The fourth requirement is to retain records. And this is for, if we get audited, to share the expenditures to the federal government and the state. So distribution, so so far, we've received two thirds of our funding. We received approximately, a little bit over a mil at the end of July. We received, we received another mil in August, and we're targeting to receive by the end of September, one, approximately one mil, and then another in October. The following month, we should receive the remainder of the balance. So that would add up to our 6.3 mil. My glasses are fogging up. And with, with the funding, there's reporting that's tied to it. So this Friday, we just submitted our first initial report, and this is to the state to allocate any reporting from March 1st through June 30th. And this was expenditures as well as projections of different projects and from July 1st through the end of the year. Our next report is going to be due October 7th, a month from now, and that's to report any expenditures from July 1st through, through the end of September. So, and I just put the dates of all the reports that are going to be due tied with this funding. So we modified the budget from what was originally presented to the board in June with the recommendation of the ad hoc committee. So we're still at 1.5 mil for the business grant program. 500,000 going to the nonprofit. We did execute a MOU with community foundations in July to execute that program. We have 300,000 going for community programming and non-traditional nonprofits. I'll, I'll talk about that later, but that's currently been, being. I'll, I'll talk about that later, but that's currently been, being led by CAB. We have another 400,000 for a second round of, of funding, and that could go to community programming or nonprofits or business as a second round. 200,000 for public health testing. We reduced IT's infrastructure budget from 1, 1.5 mil to 1 mil, which is reflected here. We also reduced the PPE and medical infrastructure to 500,000. County necessary expenditures is 1.733. Admin costs to nonprofits, 114,000. And then we also added elections, and this is for elections to be compliant with, with social distancing and for the November election, so 110. So that brings our total to 6.357 mil. Any questions on those? We'll go through them.
Just keep going through unless, yeah.
So a highlight of the business grant, we received a little bit over 200 application. This was managed by Workforce Development Board, a Division of Public Health, and really led by, and I, and I wanna say thank you, Enrique Arriola. He's spent a lot of time with this program, ensuring it, it moves forward, working through, with the committee that we discussed today. So we're at approximately 1.5 mil for the business grant program. The nonprofit relief was led by Community Foundation. There was approximately 41 applications that they reviewed and allocated and made, made recommendations to the county. We haven't distributed the funding to the nonprofits as we haven't received our third allocation from the state yet. So that's still pending, but... The third program, it's the non-traditional nonprofits, and 300,000 was allocated for this program. CAB Board received eight applications. They, they just met this week on Friday to discuss and make recommendations. I don't have the final recommendations yet, but my understanding is that not all eight applications are eligible. So they, they have discussed using the remainder of the funding as a grant rental assistance program to prevent individuals from, from being evicted and assist them from, from getting, and preventing homelessness with, with the remainder of that money that, that isn't allocated. The 400,000 would be allocated to a second round of programming for, it could be nonprofit businesses or, or community programming. And if we did do a second round of businesses, it would be just as small businesses in, in, in preparing for outdoor activities such as tents or PPE was, was our initial discussion. It could also be used for nonprofits or community assisting programming. So we could also do grants for individuals facing economic hardship, expenses for quarantining individuals, or cost of providing COVID-19 testing. Part of the budget includes 200,000 to expand testing capacity. OptumServe will only be here through the end of September, September 30th, and this is currently free testing for our communities. So we're gonna partner and work with these little Hawkins to expand the county's testing capacity. And that's what the 200,000 would be. IT infrastructure, the one mil, this is to, to improve telework capacities for public employees of the county. And this, this is being targeted for laptops and improving connection accessibility. So PPE and medical infrastructure, we have 500,000 for that, and it's to acquire additional PPE. Expenditures not covered by FEMA, so we have a budget of 1.7 mil for this. And this could include a, an array of categories. It could include payroll for public safety, public health, any, any workers who are substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to COVID-19. It could, it's also going to a portion of the food program. The counties, for Great Plates, the county has to put in a portion, so we're taking it out of CARES Act for, to cover that. Any public health expenses and expenses to enable compliance with COVID-19, as well as any other eligible expenses. We do have a line item to provide admin costs to nonprofits that are, that have supported the county, implementing a lot of programs and, and really getting, helping us get through the pandemic by, by assisting us at, at no cost. So it would include a 38,000 allocation to Community Foundation, United Way in the Chamber. And Community Foundation has had to increase their, their staffing. They assisted with, with our grant program. United Way has, has assisted the county in a lot of programs, including the Great Plates Program. They actually help pay for a part-time individual in the beginning of the program. They also assisted the county with COVID-19 relief programming and partnered with Community Foundation. The Chamber, San Benito Chamber, has assisted the county in, initially in the pandemic, they, they helped lead a, led a community initiative to make masks, to distribute to the community. They've worked with us on flyers, getting the word out, assisting the local businesses, and really coordinating, promoting, and facilitating some of the town, town halls we had in the beginning of the pandemic. So, so that would be for a total of 114,000. And then lastly, we have elections, 110, and this would just be to enable compliance with COVID-19, to take the proper precautions for the November 2020 elections. So the report that was submitted on this Friday, I wanna highlight that the total here is 552,000. That is coming out of CARES Act funding for the, the county's portion that wouldn't be covered by, by FEMA reimbursement. I do wanna highlight that the county has spent approximately 1.8, 1.8 million as of right now from, that are gonna be, come out of other, other sourcing, other sources of funds. So this is just the CARES Act portion that would be reimbursed from March 1st through June 30th. So with that, Stuart, is there anything else you wanna add to? So with that, I, is staff recommendation is to accept the, the proposed budget. I do wanna discuss, in an emergency matter, we did purchase two trailers to assist with quarantine individuals that don't have the means to quarantine themselves. So, so in here, one of the recommendation is to ratify the purchase of, of the two trailers and to delegate authority to staff to add this, the two trailers to the county's fixed asset inventory. The third recommendation is to authorize CAO to take all necessary steps to execute any grant programming, to stimulate local economy, or reallocate CARES Act funding to any item of apportionation for eligible projects and activities with the approval of the Ad Hoc Committee. The Ad Hoc Committee is composed of Peter Hernandez and Anthony Batello. The next, the next recommendation is to authorize waiver of county competitive purchase process for personal property and services, also with approval of the Ad Hoc. And they have to be allowable expenditures of COVID-19 to address the public health and safety emergency. Next recommendation is to delegate authority to CAO to execute any necessary grant document, programs, activities related to grant funding, subject to county council review of any grant agreements or contracts. And then lastly, our six recommendations to delegate authority to CAO to approve and execute contracts or purchase orders for goods or services over 50,000 with the Ad Hoc's approval, and again, subject to county councils review. That is it for...
Hey Dulce, I got a couple of questions. I, I recall, I think it was in this board meeting, and if it was not at this board meeting, it was when Supervisor Batello and myself met with the Community Foundation and Viki Fortino, which represents United Way. I asked the question, and I know you remember, that, that the Community Foundation is notoriously for, for getting, getting administrative fees from organizations that need the money. And Gary Burns and, and Viki said, we're not getting any money out of this. And yet, here today, there's some language that says 38,000 Community Foundation, 38,000 to United Way, and 38,000 to the Chamber of Commerce. I will not support those three allocations. I wish this was a four-fifths vote because I would have killed it myself. And I still think this is a four-fifths vote. I, I just cannot support this. They, they told us that they were not gonna ask for any money, any administrative...
Mr. Chairman, if I may clarify, they did not ask for this money. We had talked about this as proposing this to the Board, and, you know, quite frankly, I, I thought you're on board with it. We did notify you of these contributions to these organizations that had done a, a lot of work for us the last, you know, two or three months. Actually, it goes back to the online seminars that we had. Each of these organizations contributed in, in a big way. And I, I believe the United Way and the Community Foundation, you know, they're awarded this, they're gonna put it to, back into their COVID program. And, but they, they did not ask for that, any of this. And I don't believe the Chamber even asked for their contribution that were, but because of the work that they did, and it's a lot of work. It's dozens and dozens, maybe hundreds of hours of work combined. And it's going, this money is a rotate back to the community. Michelle has done a fantastic job trying to educate business community. I think Peter, Supervisor Hernandez could elaborate more on that too. But this was just a proposal to kinda show a little bit more support. But I, I strongly recommend that we fund this. And it's just, it's about keeping this money in this community and, and affecting it to people that really need it and organizations.
I mean, we, we give the, the Chamber of Commerce money throughout the year. We, we give it them. We supported them.
A little clarity, Mr. Chair. This, this cycle, we didn't, this is actually, to a certain extent, it doesn't even backfill, but, because it's COVID-related. But the bottom line is it's, they haven't gotten any funding from the county. They did last year, the last budget cycle. And that's a whole nother conversation, but as far as this funds go, yeah, the, I do remember the administrative conversation, the cost, you know, that you weren't supportive of the Community Foundation. This being CARES funding, which needs to be spent, right, is, is the biggest reason why I, I support it, is it's funny that, that we need to spend it, and it's on COVID-related activities. So if anything, maybe coming up with a strong vetting process to make sure it is COVID-related, that these funds are being spent. But I don't see a problem with it personally.
I, I do. I, I will do till the end of this. I will not support it. They promised us they will not seek administrative costs. I remember that. That was the words.
They, and they did say that. This is, this is our choice to, as a recommendation to the Board.
Yeah, it was an ad hoc agreement. And for me, I support success, and that's why, for me, that the, the thing that I, that I've zoned in on and to a certain extent, supported Supervisor Batello with the Community Foundation, is one, is the spending of the CARES Act funding, which is why COVID-related, it makes sense. But then for the Chamber, I'm, I'm very supportive of the Chamber because they do good work. And ultimately, they're, they're, they're running on fumes, and this is gonna help them to make sure to take care of the, the, the needs of the community, COVID-related stuff, because they did do a lot of work. They spent a lot of time through this whole process, not just the, the application process, but other things. I mean, from the get-go, I, it's funny because my eye has always been, as I've shared before, on, yes, public health, but then also the, the impacts of supporting public health with revenue generation, you know, which is basically the business economy, the business community. And of, before, you know, once COVID hit, without an ask, the Chamber was on the ground floor, running, doing things, getting things done, being, being very much supportive to the business community. And, and when I see things like that, I wanna support it. So it's hard to disagree with an agency that's proactive, right? We're not even asking them to do something. They're, they're getting things done. And I know because I was part of it. I was asking questions, and it's like Michelle would say, oh, we already have something for that. And then she would show me. And a perfect example is even when everything went in-house or, or, you know, I'm sorry, outdoors, you know, where you couldn't even do takeout, or you couldn't do, you, you only could do delivery and takeout. You couldn't do indoor dining or even outdoor. I think there was a time, a, a frame of time that we couldn't do any of that. They built a website where they included all the businesses of the community that are restaurants, that could do takeout. You know, obviously restaurants and, and different types of, of industries, retail, that could provide things that were a benefit to the community. Bottom line is they built it. They unified the business community, and ultimately, those folks didn't even ask for it. If anything, they were, they were very proactive to make sure to engage the businesses and ask them, hey, can I get your contact info? We wanna add your website on here. Like, they worked really hard. And when I see that, I get excited because that's what we need in our community. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
And then also on the, on the two...
Hello?
I'm sorry. So I apologize, Supervisor Medina. Medina, Supervisor?
Well, once again, this is a, an ad hoc committee being Supervisor Batello and Supervisor Hernandez's decision. And, you know, the way I look at it, Jaime, is I agree with you when you're saying that they did not ask, or they told us at one time on the meeting, and I believe it was in April, they stated that they would not take any type of a, a fee, administrative fee. Administrative fee is usually based upon either a percentage or a monthly fee. They did not do any of that. They didn't charge us a penny. Now, the results were there. Supervisor Batello and Supervisor Hernandez saw these results. They advocated for them. They did not ask for a penny. This is provided to them because they did something. They actually started a project free of charge, finished a project, which was, according to Supervisor Batello and Supervisor Hernandez, phenomenal. Am I overstating that, gentlemen?
No, they did a really good job.
And in return, we are rewarding them, which we should do. So please don't confuse the Community Foundation or anyone else of asking for these dollars. We, as supervisors up here, are rewarding them for a job well done. Thank you.
Supervisor Medina, I understand where you're coming from, but I just, I still feel there was an implied agreement here that, you know, if there's any money left over, we'll help you guys out. I, I still feel it. I mean, you're not, you guys can't argue with me otherwise. That's just my thought. It's, it's an opinion. I can't prove it with facts. I can't, I can't say here's, here's a paper trail. However, my perception was that Community Foundation, United Way, and, and the Chamber of Commerce were gonna get some way funding. I really do believe this, and this is the end result, and I'm still gonna vote no on it. on it.
Well, you know, we've got a lot more to work and things to discuss here besides that little piece, and it's just a small token of county and the people of Samuel County's appreciation for the work that they did. And I would hope that the next day that we need some help or assistance, they would be willing to lend a hand. And that's why you acknowledge people for what they do and show appreciation is because next time you're using them again for something. But anyhow, what I think we have to discuss as a board is this, really frame 11 on Dulce's presentation, is the second round of programming, about a half million dollars. Are we going to have a second round of business assistance or nonprofit assistance? You know, this COVID crisis is not going away. It's going to continue for the foreseeable future, anyway, and the need to be there. And another thing that I think all of us have talked about and probably considered in our minds, and how best utilize the CARES Act, is maybe setting up a program for rental assistance. I know with our, you know, our little subcommittee, Mr. Chairman, there was eleven applications or eight applications, anyway, and we kind of vetted them out with Enrique this past week, and it appears that some of those applications weren't accepted under that, those programs. But that's because they just didn't qualify, and they needed rental assistance, or they weren't able to, you know, it was a business, a for-profit business, and maybe we need another round to make sure we catch those individuals that for one reason or another didn't qualify or missed the opportunity. And are we allocate funds to that? Or, you know, it's Health and Human Services Deputy Director Aurelio, he has been suggesting rental assistance program to prevent eviction and assist in preventing homelessness, and that's important in the fact that I think it's wrong with the state to extend the eviction banning, in the fact that people get further behind, they're not working the hours that they're used to working, and the rents are going unpaid. Maybe these are the type of things that we ought to be looking at and helping people stay in their homes here. So I kind of wanted to throw that... This is the important conversation, not about the thirty-eight thousand to the Community Foundation, in my mind.
Well, Supervisor Patello, with all due respect, everything's important, but in reference to this, if you look at the chart, and if you look at all the committees that created, and all the nonprofits that got the money, I mean, you've got a nonprofit group that's going to get money for a future event that they're going to hold. It's just mind-boggling. It's just mind-boggling.
For what event?
They're going to have a fundraiser in November, and they might not even have it now, so therefore, they're asking for the county to pay for that. I mean, that's...
Mr. Chair, totally agree. I mean, it's, for me, it's the end in mind. What is the goal of the Board of Supervisors?
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
How do we deal with... And so in that sense, and I've always advocated for it, is anytime we set a... We set, we can't, we got to a certain extent, set an expectation with funds to make sure that there's an outcome that the board desires. So, you know, and on the note of what Supervisor Patello said, I totally agree, and it's funny because I see it from both sides of the fence. There's folks that are struggling, that are losing their jobs, they can't pay their rent. But there's also that person, that individual, I get it, there's other folks that own a lot of property, you know, it's, you know, I'm focused to a certain extent on the small, on the micro level, the individual, and there's a lot of folks out there. I actually just got reached out by someone that said, "Peter, I was just told that my... that this person that hasn't been around for six months, hasn't paid their, not only hasn't paid their rent, they, you know, they still have their property there, I guess, and I don't know what the situation was, but because they defaulted on not only their rent, they defaulted on their bills, you know, their recology, their utility bills and stuff, now all of a sudden, any kind of, any new prospective renter can't get, if they have a clean, doesn't matter, clean credit, good, everything, they, now it's on the property owner's liability for them to sign up for recology, sign up for utilities. So now it's basically the responsibilities on the homeowner. They won't allow any new renter, doesn't matter if they're credit reporting or anything, and that's recology, and I was going to bring that up with our CAO, with Ray. That's very disturbing to me, because that's, the property owner has no authority to guarantee that whoever rents is going to be, is not going to pay their bill or pay their bill to any utilities or to any agency. So all of a sudden, they're having to take that responsibility on themselves, and to them, you know, they're worried, you know, that this person was also worried about the state rental cap, that, you know, they're going to set, not only, they're extending the, what is it, the eviction declaration, but they're also in that, I don't know if it's within that language, Barbara, but they're setting an expectation where you can't even increase rent. So now you, your bills are getting more expensive as an owner, you now have to micromanage the individual to make sure that they're paying their bill. I don't know how you would do that. And if they don't, granted, if they have a valid reason, they lost their job, obviously there's got to be a working relationship or desire for it. It doesn't guarantee that, you know, what we're talking about, that it's addressing both sides of the equation, and that's hurting our economy, too, because if a person goes bankrupt because they lose their, you know, they all of a sudden have to give up their property, that's not good for us just as much as someone who is renting that property can't afford it. I mean, we got to address both, is my biggest point. So, you know, the state, again, I've repeated it before, the state has made decisions that now us, the locals, have to deal with, with really no support. And it's speaking to this. So if we can do something to, even on a policy level, to address that, you know, I think we can talk to recology to say you can't put the liability on the property owner for them to have to put their name on the bill, there's got to be a stronger expectation.
On Supervisor Patello's discussion earlier about the nonprofit relief fund, I was going to say that businesses, nonprofits, I mean, you name them, they all got funding, with the exception of the non-traditional one, which is still up in the air. And I think you're right, I think we need to start helping the individuals. I think we need to start doing that, and they deserve that. And I will support the nonprofit relief funds, help out ordinary citizens today. That's what I would like to see.
Are we talking about the four hundred thousand?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Are we referring to the four hundred thousand?
The second round?
The second round.
So for that to go to individual programming?
Yes, yeah. I'm sorry, four hundred thousand, I apologize. Supervisor Patello, is that...
Yeah, you know, and the other thing that I think is, maybe Ray could speak to it a little bit, too, that we're concerned about is that we have a narrow timeframe to develop these programs. It was a lot of work doing the business grant program and the nonprofit program and everything that we've done to this point, and there's more work to be done in a very limited period of time, and we have, I don't know, no calendar there, I can't see that far, but about three or four board meetings left in the year, in which all this six point three or four million needs to be spent, or identified being spent, hoping that we get it all. And we may need a little bit of flexibility to move money around from one program to the next.
Supervisor Hernandez? And then I got you, Medina. Supervisor Hernandez?
So I look at Supervisor Hernandez and Supervisor Patello, being that you spent most of your time doing this, what is your suggestion?
For the four hundred thousand?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would agree with Supervisor Patel, there has to be flexibility. Really, now, it's getting down to filtering the end of what we couldn't back, what we couldn't address, as far as maybe there's some applications still out there that we wanted to come in, you know, maybe opportunities for nonprofit support that they haven't gotten addressed. It's kind of like the end element of what, you know, we spent a lot of the time on the majority, now there's probably some issues that we still never got to, or folks, businesses that we never got to. But rental assistance, I think, should be within that equation, for sure. Four hundred thousand's a lot, and I think it'll help a lot.
Yeah, you know, even like some of the smaller businesses, the rents, you know, downtown or in San Juan, or even out in the unincorporated areas, that's a difference-maker for somebody to decide to stay in business. Hopefully, not talking about anybody that's a bigger business, I'm talking about the ones that have a hard time going down to the local bank and funding their little shop.
Well, let me offer a suggestion to the board. Number four, community programming, nonprofits, business, second round. Can we just divide the dollars into those three groups? Business, nonprofits, and then helping individuals? Make it a hundred and thirty-three thousand each?
Personally, I'd like to see what we didn't get to, and maybe that's why the flexibility...
You're going to... I don't laugh because of what you said, I laugh because it reminds me of Supervisor Heribonaco, you know, "The answer's money, what's the question?" You're going to get a flood of people coming in and says, "Hey, we need money, too."
Yeah.
The demand's going to be high.
Point taken, point taken. Yeah, and that's true. It's our job as the ad hoc, especially since we already have experience in fleshing this out. I think it'll, it really needs to be about informing our...
It's a good compromise. I'm willing to work with you guys, it's a good compromise.
Just about informing our discretion.
Yeah. You guys want to do it with a business, wherever you want, do it. You guys want to do it with nonprofits, do it. Let me work on the eviction, helping the individual members of our community. It's a good compromise for everyone.
Yep, yep. I think that's fair. You were going to say CAO?
I was just going to say, in light of us only having four more months left.
Yeah.
We have to spend this money in four more months.
Oh, trust me, we'll spend it.
Yeah, well, it's...
It's just making the decision on how now.
And we have to have that flexibility. I think that's what Supervisor Patello is really highlighting, that we need to be flexible because we just don't have a lot of time to do it, and we got to be agile, quick, and be able to do that. So I think that's the reason why, when you see in the very last slide there, many of those bullets authorize the CAO with the ad hocs, as well as our county council's approval to move forward with some of these things. And I think that's really kind of the key with this. There's a lot of things, even with the, even when we first established this program, we had allocated more funds to the tech side of things, but as we've gone through this, we've realized there's no computers, or a very limited amount of supply out there. And there's a lot of things that we just can't process or move forward based on there being about a six-month window of time to develop those types of things. So with that, we've had to lower that. So there's, again, just keeping in mind that there has to be that level of flexibility, and I think that's really kind of the key with this particular thing. But I think, I think if you're in agreement with that, I feel confident.
So I think it should be split three ways, because it's, at the end of the day, it's still not enough.
Yeah.
It'll never be enough, but if you split it three ways, then we just have a committee meeting about how that, you know, how that process works out.
Okay, so...
With staff support.
So you, Peter, and Anthony will be the business component. I'll be part of the helping the families. And then Mark, you'll be part of the third, what's the third one?
The grant nonprofits?
The nonprofit.
The nonprofit. Wait a minute. How about if you do that one, Anthony?
It doesn't matter.
And then Mark and Peter would do the business one. Is that okay, Mark?
Haven't you started a business already? Why would you want to reinvent the wheel when you guys have it all ready?
Yeah, that's what I... I think you don't want to confuse the...
You don't.
Okay, it's okay.
We got to keep running.
I'll stay in there for sure.
Okay, perfect. Then we'll do it that way, then. Then I'll do the individuals, work with Dulce and Vicky, and then Anthony and Peter would do the business, and then Anthony will do the nonprofits, then.
Well, we'll figure it out as an ad hoc, and the other thing that I think is going to be, you know, we have it all kind of allocated, is the community program, non-tradition, nonprofits, you know, we're not going to spend three hundred thousand.
No, we're not.
I think we're going to spend, well, five times seven is thirty-five thousand, but less than forty thousand dollars of that, so that needs to be shifted somewhere. And one of the points that I think staff is recommending is that some of these things may be needing to be shifted. Maybe it's be nine hundred thousand for IT infrastructure. Well, let's move that hundred thousand back to families, rental assistance, or business rental assistance. So we need that flexibility to be able to shift, and we just wanted the public to understand that, and the board to understand that the committee has to have to be able to do this.
Yeah. Anthony and I will work on that, because we're in that committee right now.
And I was just going to mention, Mr. Chair, that one of the things that definitely has been considered, and I know, I firmly believe the business community will be excited about, is they want to address facility readiness. You know, ultimately, what that means for them to be able to maybe have a stronger presence online, maybe that means having, for some of the businesses that are partaking in the outdoor dining, as a support, so it's COVID-related in that sense. But the bottom line is, it'll help them really pivot from their current model into something more successful. And I know the chamber would love to be a part of that conversation.
Okay. Is there any more new information I'll open up to the public? Okay, let me open up to the public.
If you're participating by Zoom and would like to comment, please hit the raise your hand icon. If you're participating by phone, hit star nine now.
I only have, I only have three minutes, so quick. The one hundred and fourteen thousand for administrative costs, Supervisor Delacruz, is that what you're talking about, for the nonprofits?
Well, to the groups that opt out.
Administrative cost for nonprofit, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is that broken down by the thirty-eight, is that what you meant? Because I don't see that in this document.
Yes.
Thirty-eighty. Okay. So I completely agree with Supervisor Delacruz, Mr. Chair, with regards to that, because I remember that specific. Oh, you can't hear me?
You're right.
Okay, is that better?
Yep.
Okay, so I specifically remember that United Way, they said that they were not going to take any administrative fees, that was a specific question that was directed to them. I have an issue with United Way because they do take a lot of administrative fees as a nonprofit to begin with for administrative costs. Their employees are paid very, very well. Did anybody check to see of these nonprofits, did they get PPP money? Because I do believe that United Way did get some PPP money, so they shouldn't, you know, go through there. Michelle did a fantastic job. I attended a majority of those meetings, getting people on board. As it is, no respect to Supervisor Hernandez about their budget, it's already a shoestring budget. So this, the work has already been done, they have a budget, it is a shoestring budget, so giving them money is only going to help them. So I know that they were able to tell their memberships that they didn't have to pay the fees, that they were waiving, they weren't waiving them, but they were delaying them. So maybe that's a way that we can help them, but I don't think that the forty thousand or whatever directly to them, that they actually did forty thousand dollars worth of work within the last few months. I attended, like I said, most of the meetings, and honestly, exchanging between, in exchange between the meetings, it was basically, I don't even know how they picked the people that were going, that were speaking, they weren't that productive to the entire community, in my opinion, and I was there for most of the meetings. Shoot, I'm running out of time.
Which meeting, Elia?
So there was the one with the, oh, just real quick, I'll get back to that. With regards to trying to help the communities, and Supervisor Hernandez, you mentioned earlier about the people that are having the outside eating or whatever, how about helping those restaurants that don't have the ability to have outdoor dining, and they're only doing indoor or delivery and pickup, whatever? I think that we should be able to reach out to those companies and ask them to go ahead and help them out. and help them out, because they're not, I can't think of anybody right now who... Miacos, Miacos is only delivery. They don't have the parking lot. I'm sorry. With regards to your answer on that, there was one with real estate. It was basically, you know, like, hi, how you guys doing? They just talked about each other, but it wasn't really helping out, helping out the majority of the citizens and how real estate was gonna help with regards to COVID. And then the other one was where there were a few people, and all they discussed was how they were teaching their kids at home, but it had nothing to do with the business that they were discussing at the time to help each other out. But, you know, I'm helping my kids with their homework, and they were exchanging information, and that's fine, but they should have opened it up to the public. They want to talk about how to educate and how to go through the process of helping parents, helping each other. And maybe that's another meeting you guys should talk about, is let's have people call in so we can help how to educate their kids at home. So, sorry, I knew I was gonna run out of time.
Thank you. Any other speaker, Carter?
If you're participating on Zoom and would like to comment, hit the raise your hand icon. If you're participating by phone, hit star nine now.
No more comments.
No comments? Okay, let's bring it back to the board. What's the wish of the board?
I'll make a...
My final comments, real quick, Mr. Chair, is this is definitely open. The two things that I mentioned were just two small ideas, there's a lot of opportunity. So I don't want to make it seem like it's limited to that. It's definitely yet to be determined, but it's CARES Act-related distribution.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion, Staff Recommendation 136.
Actually, can I add an amendment, a friendly amendment to your motion, Supervisor Patello?
Well, I'm all ears, so...
Thank you. Of the, of the, number four, community planning program divided third ways, as we stated earlier, do you accept that?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Manera, do you accept that?
Yes, second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Against, motion carries for zero. Okay, let's move on to number twenty-two.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I'd like to invite up our...
Can we get a little...
Little break?
Restroom?
Okay, yeah.
You guys want to take a break? Okay.
Take a break.
Well, good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to address you, Mr. Chair, and your fellow supervisors, as well as county staff. I'm here this morning to talk briefly about the Economic Development Corporation, and in particular, the activities over the past twelve months. For those of you who not have a chance to meet me, I'm Mark Faunus. I'm the Executive Director with E D C, and I came on board on March second. So it's been a very long and a very short six months, all at the same time. The activities of the E D C are, in effect, driven by two major, actually, one policy document and two agreements. That is the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, commonly referred to as the SEDs, as well as the Memorandum of Understanding Agreement between the E D C and San Benito County. We have one of these agreements, as well with the City of Hollister. This is an overview that was put together by the California Association of Local Economic Development Organizations, or commonly referred to as CALLED. And you can see from this graphic the key role that economic development efforts play within communities, and the direct impact of successful businesses on everyone's community, and not just on the economy itself. So we just provide this as a quick overview to give you a feel for how we view our role in terms of the economy, as well as the community at large. The mission of the E D C is extremely straightforward. We're all about business attraction, business retention, and business growth. And so that is our single goal that we work on through a variety of ways. And at the same time, you can see from the mission statement here, while maintaining and preserving our agricultural land and rural environment here in San Benito County. We've divided this up into a couple of different sections, if you will. This is a list of the activities that occurred prior to the hiring of myself as Economic Development Director. This got going last year, and you can see that the E D C hosted economic development sessions with the business council, launched the website, hosted a presentation with a site selector, applied for and received sector funding, and then finally, hiring of myself as the Economic Development Director. Shortly after I started, as you all recall, back in March, things changed dramatically with COVID-19, and we had to immediately shift what our normal activities would be. So we have a list here of the activities that we went through in conjunction with county staff and the changes we made in order to play our role as it relates to COVID-19. So we defined our role to be the one that would get information about the S B A, P P P loans, federal resources, state resources, and distribute those widely through press releases, as well as working directly with the business organizations. We updated our website in order to do this, and we continued on a weekly basis to provide updates on available resources. We also worked in conjunction with Dulce and county staff on the eleven industry-specific virtual forums that county staff coordinated. In more general terms, on a daily basis, we had calls and inquiries that we responded to as well from local businesses. Since March, we were able to accomplish some specific things that we've highlighted here. First is working with county staff and Fire Clay Tile on their expansion in Aromas. At one point, they were considering moving out of the state, and we worked with them and the county to ensure that they stayed located in Aromas, and they are now currently working on that expansion program. The second thing was the revolving loan fund. It had kind of been dormant for a few years, and we were able to reinvigorate that and work directly with Access Capital to get that program back up and running. The other main thing that we did was, we used the model that we saw in Monterey County, where this type of revolving loan fund could be changed at an administrative level with the E D A in order to make smaller microloans available to businesses. And that's exactly what has transpired. One of the big initiatives, if you will, that is in our strategic plan is to look at broadband. We have been in discussions with Etheric Networks. I believe they are now working with the county to get their permit to bring a brand-new service for broadband-style access, internet access, to the county. We also have various business outreach that's ongoing, particularly to small manufacturers in Silicon Valley. I can't say anything specific today, but we do have four companies that we have been talking to for the past few months, and we are actively trying to promote the relocation to San Benito County. In terms of our current M L U activities, we just wanted to highlight a few things. We've taken over the role of coordinating meetings of the Economic Development Partnership, which is the group of the five business organizations in San Benito County. Our central efforts with the partnership revolve around key committees. These are broadband, tourism, government affairs, airport, and permitting. In most cases, we're working directly with the E D P on these. In regards to the airport, that is through E D C, as well as permitting. These are ongoing efforts, and quite frankly, these will be really the basis moving forward on many of our initiatives for the next twelve months. Looking forward, we're looking at how we can link all of our efforts, such as tourism promotion, shop local, and business attraction, with a consistent message. We need to keep informed of trends such as remote working, and how that can be woven into a successful message that San Benito County is a great place to do business, work remotely, and raise a family. So with COVID-19, we, along with everyone else, including the county, had to make changes with what our goals and activities needed to be, and I believe we did that successfully. We are now getting back to the more regular activities, if you will, of the E D C, and we're looking forward to moving ahead and doing that over the next twelve months. In conclusion, we want to be really clear. Our mission is pretty simple. Business expansion, business retention, business attraction, and we continue to have that key focus. And we continue to have that key focus. This is done in conjunction with our business partners as well as the local governments. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Hernandez?
Yeah. So I asked for this meeting or for this presentation, because I know we had, from the get-go, we set the expectation, the board did, that if we're going to push forward spending $100,000 every year, and I know we gave, we put a cap on that, we set the expectation that we wanted metrics, we wanted results. And the hard part, and I hear all that, you know, all that Mark mentioned, but it's very high-level, right? It's how do you measure what's up in the sky? It's really hard. And ultimately, yeah, the last element definitely was a little bit confusing when you mentioned EDP, Economic Development Partnership. Does that consist of the HDA, the Chamber, San Juan Committee?
That's correct. That's the name that's given to all five of the business organizations when they meet as a group.
Yeah, and I, you know, certainly I could see it, it's good working with folks. You know, there's a subtle distinction between an allegiance and then ultimately a partnership. In my mind, a partnership sets metrics, sets an expectation that you're going to have deliverables. I don't necessarily see that. So I've struggled with it, and I pushed for this from the beginning. I, you know, the hardest part about running, to a certain extent, an organization is not just having the foundation of it, but having metrics to make sure that you're doing good. And without those metrics, it's hard to say we've actually done a good job. I know of Fire Clay Tile, I know they've been really interested, and I know that RMA's been really focused on trying to, on trying to come up with the permitting process. I know that that was part of the issue, to get them to expand, because I know that's what they wanted to do, so that's why. And somehow you played part of that, Mark, so I appreciate that. But my biggest point is, and I, so we met, to be clear, you know, and anything that I'm sharing, I, you know, to a certain extent, he's heard it through that meeting that we had in person. And so there's little wins, and then there's big wins. And the little wins mean you have certain things that are practical, that are actually applying to the business industry. Because yes, granted, there's the high-level element, there's the long-term planning part of it with making sure that you're inviting the right commercial businesses into our community, or even seeing what the interest is and what the market is in San Diego County for business development. That's high-level, and I do see EDC fitting that role. I just don't see a lot of the little wins, and that's to me concerning, because whether there's outcomes that are actually successful or not is yet to be determined, I guess is my best estimation. So I'm not disagreeing that we don't need economic development, but exactly what the board's sentiment on economic development is, my question to the board is, where do we stand on what economic development is? And how do we define what that economic development is as far as metrics goes? Because there really has to be metrics. Otherwise, we're going to be talking about hopeful future, prospective, God willing, someday it's going to happen, and then never seeing results. Not to say that we won't see results, but without metrics, it's kind of hard to imagine what those results will be. You can't have a meeting about what results are without knowing what you want to see first, is my biggest point. So I don't know if anybody, I'd like this, personally, I'd like this to be a lively discussion, because economic development, I'm passionate about. I really am. But ultimately, it's the board's sentiment, right, that matters as far as how we're going to move forward with what that means.
Unfortunately, at this point in time, I don't have much to say because of all the issues we're having with the pandemic. It's something where measurables are, they have to be, they have to exist. I show up to work every day, and I know exactly what I did night before. I know my production range, my cost per unit, so forth and so on. In this type of industry, or this type of work, it would be, how many people have I spoken to? How many people have I, not really closed, but how many people have actually signed up to move into the county? But right now, I'd have to sit down with you and Ms. Johnson, which I did a couple weeks, about a month ago, month and a half ago, and talk about this again. But right now, it's hard. I mean, I don't know where a lot of people are trying to attract different industries or different businesses to come into a community that is uncertain right now. So that's, I'm not giving you a freebie, but I know you're out there trying to, trying to bring things up, but we do have to sit down and come up with some type of metrics that are attainable. It has to be smart, specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, and time-bound. So that's kind of where I look at things.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments.
My position is, I guess I can honestly say the honeymoon period's over. I think it's now that exactly what Supervisor Hernandez has said, that you've got to bring substance, you've got to bring templates, frames, you've got to set up an game plan, and you've got to be a team player, too. And I know the COVID-19, you know, Supervisor Medina said that might have limited you and your ability to use some of your set skills that can provide benefit to the community. Great leaders find ways how to go around those kind of things. And so, well, we're about to wrap the first year. I know it's a five-year contract, and I think after the third year, there's, it's an open contract, right, where you can pull back the money if it's not, if the county's not getting what they want. I'm not too sure, I don't recall, but...
I thought we had an out every year.
They have an out every year? I don't know, I don't know. If Sue Doocy says yes, so I would, I would cautious or highly recommend that when you come here before the board next year, you've got to have some substance, you've got to have some templates, some planned. I mean, we used to have a good buddy of ours, kind of forgot his name, he used to own the airport lot, that he always come up and says, "I've got two businesses already, but I can't disclose their information." And he will always say that for the next five years, and no business came up. What's his name? I didn't mention his name. But my point is, but, you know, seriously, we invested a lot of money in you. We invested half a million dollars for five years. We committed, because in all our campaign material, we've always said, we've got to support economic development. We've done our part. We put money on the table. Now it's time for you and the group to go back and put substance and results and timelines and charts on the table. Of value, that is valuable to the community.
Yeah. And, you know, I think as, in all fairness, I know, Mark, you're new to this community, but historically, you know, we've, we've worked, you know, we're very individually-focused. So to a certain extent, I feel like that desire to work together is there, but doesn't mean that that actually is happening. So I know there's organizations that are wanting to work together, but how, right? Everybody has their idea of how. My point is, is it's a heavy lift to get all these organizations to work together, to have common goals, where you're not necessarily picking and choosing who does what, but where there's, there's, there's an agreement within that support system, within that group, to do that, to have success. But, you know, and I mentioned to you when we met in person, is I want to, personally, I'd love to see just the small wins. You know, I'd love to see signs highlighting that we are the home of the Pinnacles National Park. That Soladad took that from us, and I'm blown away that we haven't taken advantage of that. You know, so there's all this, there's all these potential things that are going to highlight what we are, and who, what, you know, and there's got to be a focus on how to get that done. You know, how to, the little things like that, that would make a big impact. You know, we have a wine industry, we have Hollister Hills that, you know, when San Benito Street was open, my business would see RVs traveling downtown all the time. So there's this tourism element that I think, like, the Chamber would be successful at doing it, but they need help. So how do we coordinate these organizations to, and then obviously, there's got to be funding to make these things happen, but a common goal to really highlight what it means success. I'm just using those things as an example. You know, and dreaming the big dreams of having big, big companies that are going to provide a lot of jobs, that are going to have a huge benefit for the county resources is good, but, you know, that's the long-term. There's got to be the short-term. There's got to be the little wins, and that's where I'm at. And metrics for that, I think, are a lot easier. So those are my comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Let me, did you conclude your report so I could open up to the public? Okay, I will open up to the public. You have any speaker cards?
If you would like to comment, hit star nine now, or hit the raise your hand icon.
Yeah, Richard Benton Court, 4140 South Side Road. I think, first of all, he said there was 11 directors on your...
The EDP.
Yeah. And who are they, those folks, and how are they, how did they get there, is one thing. The other thing that I wanted to mention, it's very, very important, I believe, on this gentleman right here, Harry, they should be coordinating together. If they come up with somebody or a company, they should get with Harry and make sure that they can get together with that company and bring him in here. That's all I got.
Thank you. Just to quickly answer those questions, the board of the EDC is made up of 11 folks. It's a variety of local business people, as well as representatives of some of the local organizational groups as well. In terms of coordination with county staff, and in particular, Harry's staff, that's pretty much being done on an ongoing basis. Harry and I talk every week or two weeks or so, and if we have specific inquiries or questions about businesses, we immediately reach out to him and his staff and work together to solve any issues that do come up.
That's enough. I prefer discussions at the podium. Thank you. Next speaker card.
Dulce, you okay? Elia Salinas. So the gateway to the Pinnacles was literally given away. It wasn't taken away from us. That was a decision that was made here. We tend to shoot ourselves in the foot when we have the opportunity, and it just doesn't happen, to make, to bring economic development to this community. We have people out there right now that are fighting to have a business that wants to come in here. We have people out there that are fighting to, because they had misinformation, and we were trying to get the Better Bell Project, and that was going. So we've had other opportunities with other businesses, and we have people within ourselves. We tend to fight, and we tend to shoot ourselves in the foot when we should be bringing in economic development. I agree with Supervisor Medina that we were not anticipating COVID-19. Okay? So he came on board, and for the last six months, we've been dealing, we've been dealing. I don't know what other corporations are out there right now that are wanting to come here. I don't know what other businesses are wanting to come here. I mean, I wanted Amazon here so bad. I was nearly in tears when I found out that they're our neighbors in Gilroy, in Santa Clara County. Why is anybody going to want, what business wants to come to San Benito County when we've got people fighting among ourselves about bringing businesses? People don't want business, so why? So this gentleman here and the EDC has a problem with bringing businesses here, because we have people that are very vocal that they don't want it. And if they want it, they want to dictate where it has to be. So he's up against, he's got battle, he's going uphill. He needs the support of the entire, the entire board, and he's got the support of the businesses. But we need to figure out in a time of COVID, and that's because, it's not just COVID that has hit, we are in a major economic recession, and it's only getting worse. People are losing their businesses, people are having to leave, vacate their buildings because they can't pay the rent. How are we going to get them to San Benito County? How are we going to get them into Hollister? And how are we going to get them into San Juan Baptista? That's what this man is dealing with, and that's what this corporation is dealing with right now. So if anybody has any ideas, please come forward. Don't come with complaints, come with some resolved answers to help our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one participant on Zoom. Please unmute yourself and state your first and last name for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, hi, this is Cala Cuz Mickey. I just wanted to thank Supervisor Hernandez and other supervisors for bringing up the notion that we really need to have measurable and metrics and accountability for the EDC. I'm all for the investment, I think it's great. Personally, I'd like to actually see us look at increased spend investment over time, as long as we have the measurable that show that there's performance to go with it. So I just want to commend the board for bringing that up. And I also want to commend Supervisor Hernandez for talking about home Pinnacles National Parks. We really do need to brand San Benito County as the home of Pinnacles National Park. And so I think that's great that you're bringing that up, I'd like to see something like that happen sooner than later. So thank you, appreciate it.
If anybody else would like to comment, hit star nine or hit the raise your hand icon.
That's it? Okay, thank you. That concludes number 22. Now we'll go to 23. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, 23 is an update of proposed changes to the sign ordinance before it's presented to the Planning Commission. The changes are outlined on page 530 of the agenda. As a background, in order to make our sign ordinance more compliant with the recent case law, relatively recent case law, in the Gilbert case, we decided earlier this year to treat political signs the same as temporary, all other temporary signs. So there's not going to be a content-based distinction between political signs and all other temporary signs.
Barbara, when did that happen?
March, April, February, I don't actually, probably have it.
Of this year?
Yes, of this year, before the primaries. But that change actually brought the political signs into the requirements for all of their signs for temporary signs, including the size limitations, the requirement that they get a permit, and the application fee and the deposit. So the proposed change that we have right now for the board to consider, which would actually come back at a later date after it's presented to the Planning Commission and back then to the board, is that basically to consider whether or not signed permits are needed for all temporary signs. There is a mixture of jurisdictions on that. Some, some do require signed permits, but the question is whether that's time-consuming for staff to require signed permits, deposits, and application fees for temporary signs, which are going to be removed. In this case, they're allowed up for 100 days.
How many days?
Hundred, yes. So this would eliminate the requirement that you need to have a permit for temporary signs. In lieu of the permit, the code would require insert, or require labeling requirement, requiring each sign to be labeled with the date that it was posted, the name, address, email address, and phone number of the party who placed the sign. So if it wasn't labeled, it could be removed. And also, the date that it was posted, you could verify the 100 days from that date. The sign should be removed within two days of the expiration of the 100-day period. Signs shall not be located within or projected over into any public right-of-way, and it indicates the enforcement, the sign ordinance is modified to refer to Title I as a whole, not merely Chapter 1.03. That's a minor, minor change. The temporary signs right now have not to exceed of 32 square feet. Our previous political sign section, I don't believe, had a size limitation, but currently all signs must be 32 square feet or less. So with that change, if the board, this is presented to the board, so if you would like to have any different ideas presented to the Planning Commission, you can provide them to me to present the next step, which was the equally critical, is that we were requesting the board, if you would be in agreement with that, to direct all staff subject to the board's direction, that no staff time shall be used to enforce the county's sign ordinance as it pertains to temporary signs only being posted without a permit until the attached draft ordinance is presented to the Planning Commission and, if recommended, 30 days after it is approved by the Board of Supervisors. I submit to the board for any comments, for your consideration.
I think I spoke with you in length enough times, and I agree with what is stated in, in your findings.
I'm okay with that, Barbara. Peter?
I had a question, Mr. Chair. So is, so the goal was to include political signs into this temporary signs, which require a permit. So when you're talking about temporary signs, that's relative to like the business community? Or who puts up temporary signs?
Well, in my mind, I envision it for the, you know, the theater groups, people that have the, the local fundraising dinner.
Credit sales.
You know, kind of variety of different events that are time-sensitive, that just go up for, for a period of time to advertise something that's coming up.
So now if we, that being, was that state required, or is that us, just as a board, just made that decision?
To bring political signs into temporary signs?
Yeah.
That was a result of a Supreme Court decision that says you cannot, well, it says that if you are going to differentiate based upon content, it has to meet strict scrutiny, which is kind of a hard standard to meet. So the way to meet that is to make sure that your sign ordinance is not dependent on reading the sign to determine its content. So in general, the signs should be content-neutral, the sign ordinance. So the regulations aren't based upon the content of the sign. You can say that in this district, the signs have to meet this requirement, like it can't be over, you know, 10 square feet, or it can't be placed more the next number of days. It's, it's based upon your districts and where you want your signs to be located, more than what the content of the sign is.
Wow, that's confusing.
Yeah, because it rose out of a church case, I believe, in the town of Gilbert, I think, where, you know, you, you don't want political signs, let's just say, you don't want the rules about political signs to be different than the rules for advertising a church, you know, event. You know, you're just not supposed to look at the content of the signs. Unless you have a, you know, in general, it's much better to have it content-neutral. Especially, like, how are political signs? I mean, they are, definitely, but, you know, in this case, you know, political signs are similar to other type of temporary signs.
So content-neutral, so you're saying they have to follow by certain guidelines according to their content?
No, they have to follow certain requirements regardless of their content. So, for example, the political sign would be the same as a church.
First Amendment issue, right? It's...
It is, it's not the, we're not prohibiting based upon speech. What we're saying is we're not giving some speech certain rules and other speech different rules. So, for example, if, just, you know, if, you know, a church said, "Big revival come on Saturday," we're not saying that you have to get a sign permit for that. But for the political sign, you don't have to get a sign permit. Everything's going to fall under the same requirements.
So regardless of speech, we're not touching that, we're just saying you have to do a permit, and it has to be, these are the rules for putting up a sign?
Right now, but that, our new proposed change is that nobody would have to get a permit, because I think...
Oh, so it would actually go backwards? There would be less regulation?
Yeah, and I think that a lot of people, and I won't cite the numbers, I think a lot of people are placing up temporary signs probably without getting a permit.
One, excuse me when I mentioned the fees and all that.
Oh, yes, currently, there's a fee, $35 plus, I believe, $100 deposit for a temporary sign permit.
So now there wouldn't be?
Now there would not be.
Okay, that sounds fair. Yeah, I mean, it's...
Because I don't know that we have compliance, we're not really doing a lot of enforcement of the temporary sign permit ordinance, I meant, requirements.
So as long as it's in like private property?
Yeah, and if it's, if we see it up there like six months later, then we could go out and remove it because it's supposed to be only up for 100 days. But, yeah, but most temporary signs, if it's within that 100 days, I don't think that there'll be any, you know, enforcement of that unless it's in the public right-of-way. What I'm, what I'm saying is that, you know, of course, you, the ordinance always can be enforced, but what it's saying is that it wouldn't have a permit requirement, and it's reducing that permit requirement for temporary signs.
Sure.
Supervisor Medina?
You know, just to answer your question, Peter, because I know where you're going with this, is Reed versus the town of Gilbert, it was in Gilbert, Arizona, is a case in which United States Supreme Court clarified when municipalities may impose content-based restrictions on signage. This case also clarified the level of constitutional scrutiny when that should be applied to the content-based restrictions in speech. In 2005, Gilbert, Arizona, adopted a municipal sign ordinance that regulated the manner in which signs could be displayed in public areas. The ordinance imposed stricter limitations on signs advertising religious services and signs that displayed political or different messages. When the town sign code compliance manager cited the local church for violating the ordinance, the church filed a lawsuit in which they argued the town's sign regulations violated the First Amendment. So this is in theory the opposite of, you know, what...
So it's defending the First...
It's defending the First Amendment, which I know you're, you're pretty passionate about, so I just wanted to, you know, to mention that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for the clarity, Supervisor.
Thank you.
Okay, you guys are all good? Let me open up to the public. Any speaker cards?
So I brought this issue up a few months ago because I know that I've been seeing more signs put up, and I wanted to know what our ordinance was with regards to, there are posts, and it's for, you know, real estate, most of them are real estate, you know, that make a U-turn because you just missed the housing development down the road. Is there a fee for those, even though it's private property? I, I believe there should be some kind of a permit process, and I wasn't aware of whether there was a permit process, and a limitation of how many can we have out there? Because I've seen over the few months, well, this, I brought this up a few months ago, so let's say the, in the last year or two, I don't know, maybe March, I saw more signs going up on private properties. And most of, and, and we have some on 25, we have some on Union Road, there's some on Fairview Road, and they just kept popping up, and I'm like, every, you know, there's more. So are, is the county getting a fee for that? And those are not temporary, those are permanent. So what are the fees, or do, they don't, they don't get, they don't get changed at all or whatever? And I understand people can advertise, but I know, I think it was in the 1980s, as of the 1980s, we no longer are allowed to have billboards along the highways and cities and stuff like that. But instead of billboards, now we have these small signs. Are they considered temporary, and for how long are they allowed? And more than anything is, I believe that that's revenue that the county should be getting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speaker?
It's my understanding that the other signs that are not temporary signs that would be up for more than 100 days, they would still have to comply with the county's sign ordinance, which requires a permit. And I'm paraphrasing based upon my understanding of the sign ordinance, I could pull up the sign ordinance if you wanted me to confirm. But they should require a permit, and they should have a fee being paid for that.
For which ones, Barbara, you said?
For permanent signs being placed.
Okay, so bring it back to the board. Okay, so, do you need, any, any direction from us, Barbara?
Per staff recommendation, if that's acceptable.
Make a motion per staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you. I think that concludes our meeting.
So this, this is as official as of right now, which means...
No, it has to go to the Planning Commission.
After.
It will go to the Planning Commission, but no staff time will be spent enforcing the temporary, temporary signs until it comes back to the board and is approved. So we're not going to be...
There is no closed session because we discussed this in the morning.
Make a motion for adjournment.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.